Let's get that thing going. I'll call the meeting to order. It's 7:03. Notice has been given, the meeting is duly constituted. So I will be reading a statement. Or is it you that read that statement first? Anne?
If you will talk about the purpose of the public hearing, I can then give you a brief background.
Okay, good. So, an agenda has been published and is available to you should you desire to see it. And so I will read the following statement.
You just ask person by number first, I'll give this and then we'll...
Fine, okay, thanks. This is the first OCP workaround statement, public hearing that we've ever had, sir. So I will ask interim CIO Anne Yansu to give us a little bit of background on the purpose of the regional context statement.
This public hearing is in regard to the official community plan Amendment Bylaw number 493-2015, which amends official community plan bylaw number 408-2008. The purpose of this bylaw is to update the regional context statement as required by the Greater Vancouver Regional District's Regional Growth Strategy. All regional districts with a regional growth strategy are required to link their regional growth strategies to the official community plans of their member municipalities. Regional context statements are the means to achieve this point. Metro 2040 is the Greater Vancouver Regional District's Regional Growth Strategy. The Village of Lyons Bay's regional context statement must show how our official community plan supports and aligns with the goals and strategies set out in Metro 2040. Metro 2040 was adopted in July 2011, and member municipalities were to develop new regional context statements to support this. Lyons Bay contracted Modus, a consultant, in 2015 to assist with producing a draft regional context statement. The GVRD, or Greater Vancouver Regional District, has reviewed the draft, and my understanding is that it is approved to be presented at a public hearing here tonight.
Thanks, Anne. So I have to read a fairly lengthy statement into the record, so please bear with me. This is a public hearing to be held in the Village Hall of Lyons Bay on September 15th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. The Village of Lyons Bay Council is convening this public hearing in order to consider and receive submissions regarding the official, the proposed, sorry, official community plan amendment bylaw number 493 of 2015. The intent of this amendment is to register and table for submission to Metro Vancouver a workaround or interim regional context statement pending rework of the full official community plan, budgeted plan for next year. Anybody, anyone who believes their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be heard or may present a written submission respecting the matters contained in this bylaw. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation, but our function tonight is to listen to the views of the public. It's not the function of council at this time to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After the public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to their representations made here tonight. Your only opportunity to comment on this proposed bylaw is during the public hearing. Members of council are not permitted to receive further submissions once we have closed the public hearing. We have received reports and documents in writing and by email which may be considered by council, and they are available for your review and discussion here tonight at the recorder's table in several copies. A list of documents and copies of these may also be obtained from the village staff during the public hearing. And after?
They may be obtained, but the council is not allowed to receive comments on those.
Correct, thanks. Written submissions received during the course of these proceedings will be added to these documents so that everyone may examine them. That's always the difficult part. That's why we have photocopies still switched on. To maintain order during the public hearing and to ensure everyone has had an opportunity to be heard, the following rules of procedure have been established. I will call for public comment three times. Please commence your remarks by approaching the podium, stating your name and address. If you are speaking on behalf of some other person or organisation, please identify the name of that person or organisation. Each speaker is requested to limit their remarks to five minutes. You have a second and third opportunity to speak once everyone has had a first opportunity. Please limit your comments to the subject of the bylaw amendment. Please do not obstruct the public hearing, and please be respectful of others. Please ensure that your comments are focused on the specific issue being considered. Please observe these rules, and if you have any concerns about them or a point of order, please address your comments to the mayor, that's me, as the chair. I will now call for public comment for the first time. Myron Leter?
Good evening, my name is Myron Lovett, 406 Cross Creek Road, Lyons Bay. I and my family support the current mayor and the council for the OCP legal audit requirements. The family background here, we're the fourth generation for Lyons Bay, started at Brunswick Beach, where we had packed 'em in. The families had community involvement with my grandparents, my parents, and us and our daughter. It's really a residential area, we feel, and should be continued residential at the thrust, realising we have requirements that we have to look at other things like agriculture and industrial, it doesn't really apply to us. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. You've recorded the names? Thanks. I'll call for further comment.
Yes, my name is Tony Clarks, from Cloughwick Street.
Could we have that number?
Ninety, ninety, we're not secret.
We knew that anyway.
But it's expanding the number of people that come to Lyons Bay. I think actually I was only original OCP, thinking it was a good idea to expand maybe duplexes and so on and so forth at the time, when we did it. But as a famous politician once said, "When the situation changes, I change with it." And what with the summer we've just gone through, when there was, I'm sure there was a lot of consternation about water supply here and so on and so forth. And if we really truly believe that we're coming for warmer weather and less water, I am very hesitant to sort of think of expanding the population of Lyons Bay at the present time, unless we can have adequate source of water. That's all I want to say.
Thanks, could I just, your specific concern relates to water supply?
Yeah.
So, to avoid any doubt, land use, traffic, municipal resources are not primarily your concern? The concern centres around water use?
Well, at the time you were doing it, we thought, for instance, if you had really well-designed duplexes, if you wanted to increase population, and they were, they would have proper driveways for each person and not use the street and so on, that would be an answer to all those things. But mainly, right now, currently, it's the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Call for further comment?
Mayor, my name is Rini Rose, I reside at 160 Lyons Bay Avenue. And I guess my question is, I'm not really sure how this Lyons Bay is really supporting and aligning with the regional growth policy. I think that, in looking at the numbers, allowing for another four homes per year over ten years is just not adequate. I'm worried about the school. I love that it's a community here, that there's young people and there's old people. We need more housing, we need more young people here with children. I'm worried about the school. Reading here, I didn't realise that enrollment was down to thirty-two students when it can accommodate sixty. I think that we can still have a very wonderful community and have some more people and provide some more diverse housing options for more people and get some more younger people here with children. I'd love to see that. So again, when they talk about growth strategy, this doesn't look like a growth strategy. This looks like barely maintaining the status quo. And the regional, all other regions are taking some growth and they're creating some really vibrant communities. I look at the Corner Store up here, and I just, I love it so much, I want everyone to come and support it because we need it. And as people move away, that store's going to be on same too because how can you be a viable store or business when people only buy, you know, one quart of milk a day? So we need those things, we love those things, and we need a few more people here to share our beautiful space. I don't see how this is really accommodating growth. I see some, maybe some secondary suites, but that's not what a family needs. We need other forms like duplexes or townhomes. They're not a bad thing, they're beautiful. That's just my... So again, how is, how are we making a complete community by not allowing for a little more growth?
Okay, thank you very much. Fred, wouldn't it be a good idea for you to come and sit here, because councillor Fred Bain, in theory, should be allowed to ask questions as well? Are you happy to just shut them up from the floor? It's fine by me.
I think you're better here.
Okay, good.
Scott Gordon, 160 Lyons Bay Avenue as well. I support the future which I think the OCP will do because it talks about in 2016, the OCP update will look towards things which I think are really exciting. And I pick up some things about consider redevelopment of the public work area. It's a great piece of property, it'd be great for multifamily. It's a stupid use right now, it should go up in the gravel pit. So I encourage council and the community to really push hard for new development areas. If we do it small and selective and well-designed, I think we can increase our population, give us the opportunity to have multifamily. Maybe it's quasi-affordable so we can have children and the young families, because at some point, thirty-two kids is not going to be able to sustain what the school will support. If we lose the school, I think we've got a big problem because all those young families now with kids who go down to the park and receive them all the time, that drive from here to Horshu Bay two or four times a day, if you're taking your kid back and forth, will be too much. So we're going to have a problem. Lyons Bay will become a retirement area. I don't think that's what we want. I think we want a diverse population. So I absolutely encourage and would be prepared to volunteer for some of these things for, if there's a committee which talks about these things in the OCP, to update it, to encourage these things, I am more than happy to help.
Say the magic word.
What's that?
Volunteer.
Absolutely. If I can help to make the community stronger. And Rini is absolutely correct. The Corner Store with the coffee shop is a lightbulb. And I know that the owner and Michael did not really want to get into that business. He really is not heart and soul into it, but he's there at night, he's there in the morning. He's not a guy who runs a store. He's a doctor. He established the Burnaby School Outreach Programme. So he's not a guy selling licorice, but he's doing it for the community good. We have to support it if we have a reduced population and there's no place for the kids to buy licorice and things. I don't go there that often. I go there to buy a coffee and lasagna, a few little treats in the store. But if we all don't do that, we're going to lose the store. We had two retail bays right next door to the restaurant. They're now gone, they've been vacant for the past year. No one is going to move into those. We might as well rezone those two little retail into suites. We might as well create two one-bedroom suites there because it's, nothing's happening now. I think we have the opportunity to... Lyons Bay is great. Everybody wants to be here. I'd like to help keep Lyons Bay great and support it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll just interject at this stage while I, before I call for more comment. You know, this workaround statement, as they call it at the metro level, is a difficult thing to write because it presupposes what an as-yet-unformulated OCP will say. The OCP, as you obviously know, is subject to an ongoing public consultation process. It hasn't even been written yet. The basis for the 2016 OCP will be the existing one. But it's very difficult to write something like this presupposing what something in the future will say. So this will probably guide and colour the OCP, but I think we have opportunity in the real OCP, which will, the regional context statement of which will be replaced. This regional context, that's a very convoluted grammar. This RCS will be replaced by the new OCPs. But I think this probably, it goes quite a ways towards illustrating current council's thinking on what the context of Lyons Bay will be, at least as far as the regional growth strategy is concerned. So even though I'm not supposed to be interjecting comment, that's to give a sort of a sense of colour of where we see this thing sitting in the continuum. So I'll call for any further comment? Let's have some comment.
I'm scared of this, but I think I need to... I really read that document this afternoon. Sorry, my name's Carol Brady. And sixty, I'll view place.
Sir, what's your address?
Sixty, I'll view place. So, to backtrack, I've only read this document this afternoon, being a little out of touch with what's happening in the village. Have lived here for fourteen years now and came here because we just love the beautiful setting, the rural setting, the sense of community that we hoped we would find. And I'm quite disturbed to see such a dramatic change in direction as far as density is concerned, rezoning of property, more suites. Those are my main concerns, and related to that is the availability of water, the availability of off-street parking, the additional traffic throughout the village. I think those are really elements that need to be considered more fully. Living on our view, for the last few days, I've been counting the number of cars on our street. Nine cars constantly parked along, not even half a kilometre. I think that if there's anything like suites, people having suites connected to their homes, off-street parking should be provided on their property. If we do any work on our house, there's no parking for us to park our car on, and I don't think that's fair. So basically, it's the high-density issue that really concerns me at the rezoning of existing properties.
Thank you. These are the sorts of things, I mean, as you can see, we have a fairly wide range of opinions, so these are the sorts of things we want to hear. And this will be the last opportunity for public input, so it now's the time. If everybody's spoken for the first time... Absolutely, please. We'll go in the second round.
Robin Brady, sixty, I'll view. Just something small that I noticed, but is this actually wanting to phase out certain types of heating in the village? Namely, oil, which I can understand should be phased out, but it also speaks about wood burning? Is that something the GVRD is against? That's what I'd like to know. Because there are a huge number of houses that do have wood stoves. And we have recently just upgraded our one and spent thousands on a new one, not knowing that this would appear. I think you want to know where this is?
Yeah, that would be useful. I think it's in goal three on the second page. Yeah, we can certainly tighten up on that. I can assure you that wood stove change-out is, I wouldn't call it a typo, it's insufficiently explained. But that means it's change-out of inefficient wood stoves for a high-efficiency wood stove.
Oh, okay. Well, we put a very efficient one, yeah. But I didn't quite understand, you know, what it was saying there.
Interestingly enough, I was just reading on Metro's website today about their wood stove replacement programme. It's a bit minjly. If you're lucky, they'll give you $500 rebate for, towards your new installation. So to answer your question there, Metro also recognises the need for wood heat, especially in communities like ours. But they are concerned about carbon targets, which we are concerned about too. We have carbon goals that we have to reach at some point, and particular emissions. So, no, wood stoves are not banned by any means. We're seeking to move to high efficiency. So I'll make a note of that, thanks.
What does it mean, so learn to burn? Is that some brochure they've put out?
Sorry, a big pardon.
It says, yeah, so learn to burn, wood stove change-out. Is that a brochure? It says it's a capital L and B.
I believe the intent there, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, would be to institute a learn-to-burn programme in the village. Again, these are all things in the OCP. These are not plans. These are things that are planned to be done. Well, it is a plan, it's an official plan, but none of them are in play right now. As I don't need to tell people, council's role is to establish policy, and staff's role is to administer it, and these are all future programmes.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah. No, but I'm mess with my computer incorrectly. I mean, in completely, really. Okay, thanks. So I'll call for a second round of comments, if I may.
Can I do it first?
Yes. You almost had to go second.
It's all right, I can be third, but... My name is Jim, and I live 105 C D. And I guess since this is comments, this'll just be comments. I have, I like to think I'm a relative newcomer here, but I in fact live here for thirty years. And I think from some of my neighbours, that puts me relatively new. I have seen some big changes in the thirty years that I have lived in Lyons Bay. We have gone from an area predominantly rental income property, suites, rental houses, chaos and confusion, police coming in the night, to now single families that have children. I think we have, in our little cul-de-sac, I would guess ten children under the age of ten. Of the ten children that are living on our street, I think four maybe go to school here, the rest do not, for whatever reason. One new couple moved in, they were not aware that there was a school in Lyons Bay and just enrolled their kids elsewhere. You don't seem to be getting the news up. Other people want French immersion, other people want whatever. Anyway, to get to the, I guess just comments. It has to be difficult through this OCP process to really, you know, you want to make sure that you really want what you think you want before you go and get it because you might get it and then find you don't want it and you have to do something about it. I understood years ago that Lyons Bay amalgamated with Brunswick Beach because it was going to assure Lyons Bay of a more reliable source of water. It looks like that union didn't bear fruit, as exhibited in the last little while. We've had more oil-water advisories, we've had, I think, for sure we were only on stage two water, watering restrictions here in the village, but I think the concern probably coming from council was more than the general public knew of. Nobody knows how much water we have. It's not like you can go and look in the lake and say, "Oh, the lake is down two feet, we'd better do something." When the groundwater dries out, the groundwater dries out, we use so much water, we can't possibly truck it here, we can't get it here. When we run out of water, we run out of water. To increase the population doesn't seem to me to be such a good idea. But well, just because, we don't know for sure even if we can supply water. But what does happen when we increase the population? We can have an issue with suites, for example. I know that over the years, they've been regulated and looked at, and sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. Seville is another street that has parking issues. And I recently had an issue with parking. I went to both the village hall and to the bylaw enforcement officer, and in neither case could I get an answer to my query. Either the village staff doesn't know or they're not willing to pass out the information. If I go to my computer, I can get a copy that is recognised, bylaws is recognised not as legal. If I want a real copy, I can go to the village office and I can pay to get one. It seems strange for me to be asking questions about parking when I don't know what the parking laws are and I can't find out unless I pay for it. As we, you know, just, Lyons Bay was originally conceived as going to have two parking places per household. Now we have suites, now we have... Anyway, at the same time, even if we don't have a suite, sometimes kids get cars, they live at home still, cars on the street, they're here, they're there, they're everywhere. I really didn't notice what traffic was like in Lyons Bay until I started walking my grandchildren around the community. Traffic is too heavy. There is a lot of it. There's people texting and doing whatever they do and they're paying very little attention to what's going on. There's a lot of Lyons Bay that I don't like. I don't like to see the changes that are happening. I don't like to see the number of people that are moving into the village. And they move here for various reasons, and I don't know that economics is one of them. You know, "Oh, I can get a house that's cheaper to live in Lyons Bay than it is in North Vancouver. I can get a house, I could put it in a suite, I could do all these kind of things," and away it goes. And it's, again, I don't like to see us regulated to death. But just as the question was raised about wood burning appliances, we used to have one fireplace in my neighbourhood, now we have four. And when we get dry weather like we had, when we do get a cool evening, somebody lights this fire, I get nervous when I smell wood smoke and we got dry, you know, like, where are we going here? What's happening out in the chimneys? We've had chimney fires, we've had all kinds of stuff. As population increases, sometimes it isn't such a good thing. I understand we need a tax base, I understand we need to increase revenues. But it's the old story, they can put twenty people in a lifeboat, if you've got twenty-five to get in there. If you try to get the twenty-fifth person in, they all go down the tube. And I would not like to see that happen in Lyons Bay. So forward planning, I think, takes, you know, a lot of wisdom and a lot of thought. And I would hate to see council just rush into, "We've got to do whatever we can to increase our tax base. So let's get whatever we can so that we can get a few more dollars." And I appreciate it, times are tough and everybody's scrambling for money and that is just the way it is. But anyway, the whole point is that any future growth has to be very carefully thought of. And do we really want what we want? And what is the overall picture? Thank you.
Thanks. You know, I would comment that, you know, I've been told not to comment. That, you know, it's fairly unique amongst governments that Canada, and particularly B C, requires an official community plan to address exactly those things so that people can buy into the plan and see what it is. So, I mean, you know, in a way, that really helps.
Could I make a comment? Sitting here, I'm reading your lips and you have your hand in front of your face, you can't hear.
Oh, sorry. That's not Freudian, I assure you. Okay, good. I think... Please.
Okay, sorry for my English.
Sorry for mine.
Okay, I live in 405. We bought 2009, we bought a house there, then we demolished the house, and we were going to put in a bike, just build a house for... I have the daughter, she's running the kindergarten or something like this, and she has a family and would like to make some duplex. The, my question is, how can I know whether it should be accepted or not, this document? And the second question, can we divide this lot? Now we have a lot there, maybe. And if you, I'm thirty years old, but I'm since 2009... And I'm thirty years old, but I'm since 2009. On my mind, Lions Bay is just a little bit dark of the village. Because hopefully we have everything, and what's here is more than it is. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't need to keep, there's not too many people here, so we don't need to make it highly formal. So, second round.
Just, when I'm reading this, it says, "We're here tonight. The purpose of the bylaw is all municipalities in Metro Vancouver are required to adopt regional context statements that align with Metro Vancouver's regional growth strategy." So, I think it's important that people know that we are required to take our share of growth throughout Metro Vancouver. We might not like it, or we might not, you know, we might have some concerns with parking or traffic, but growth can be managed and it can be in a good way. And we're required, just to be fair to everyone else, we can't just push off people to every other municipality. And so I think it's, we need to be honest. Are we really going to align with this growth strategy? Because if we come out with an OCP in 2016 and everyone says, "No growth here", we're not in accordance with the regional growth strategy. And I think people just need to know that that's what we're passing tonight, is that we're making a commitment to participate like everybody else.
Yeah, thanks. Again, I'll comment against advice of council. It is correct that the regional growth strategy, the so-called Metro 2040, calls for a million more people in the next twenty-five years. They will be housed according to the regional growth strategy in urban centres, concentrations of whatever it is. They've got a whole bunch of planning terms. There's also protection for the ALR, agricultural land reserve. There's rural areas. I'll point out that currently, in the metro growth strategy, Lions Bay is entirely, as you'll see on the map at the back, classified as general urban, not rural, as many people think. So, that does imply a certain expected density within the context of our zoning, which is almost RS1. We have, you know, as you know, we have a school, we have a marina, we have a light commercial. The rest is residential. So, that's a very useful piece of input. Thank you. So, these are all things that will colour the third reading of this amendment to the bylaw, which is required. Unfortunately, the timing and the cycle is such that we couldn't do it all as part of new OCP. Typically, OCPs will cost anywhere up to a quarter of a million dollars. That's not something we have in Lions Bay. We budgeted, Fred, do you remember? I think we pulled the budget this year, and I think the staff indication that it's a $60,000 exercise, which we are mandated to provide. Now, the one get-out that we have there in terms of the community charter is that they don't stipulate how often you have to update, but we are required to update it. So we're slightly behind the curve there, because typically municipalities look to update their OCP every five years. And ours was issued in '08. Okay, so I'll call for further input in the second round. You're not allowed to say anything?
I'm not allowed to say anything?
No, I know.
We are not allowed to say anything?
We are not allowed to say anything.
I still would like to say I'm worried about the water.
So I'll take final call for second round comments and ask for third comments. Seeing none?
Can I ask a question?
Please. Well, to the extent I'm allowed to answer it, yeah. You can ask.
And goal four, this study that a recently completed land use master plan explored a variety of additional housing forms in the community, and the results of this study will be considered as part of the 2016 OCP update. Was that not rejected or not accepted by council last year?
Thanks for that catch. You're absolutely right. That land use plan was tabled, and funnily enough, we just discussed it in yesterday's council meeting. So this is all I noticed. It was tabled by previous council for reconsideration by this council. We've actually asked staff to report by when we have to reconsider that. So it was not accepted, it was not issued, it was not, it was tabled. So there is a draft plan that, Fred, what's the terminology?
Received.
Received, thank you. Not accepted, not promulgated, not anything. A draft report was received by power council and tabled. So we need to actually just table that. Just remind me, sorry, where was that?
Goal four, the second class protocol.
On the other page. Oh, there we go. Yes, got it, thank you. So that's actually factual in Korea, but wasn't completed. You know, there's going to be sort of factual type errors as well.
I'm a little confused. We have to take some growth. That's what they've dictated. Lions Bay has to take some growth. Is this correct?
No, no, there's no obligation.
So there's no obligation for us to take growth?
This is a statement of how we will align with the regional growth strategy. If, for example, we were 100% agricultural land reserve, our alignment would be to take no further growth. But, okay, so we're not quite at that level. So there is a continuum, and this is the statement of how we will align with these goals. They stipulate four goals. Here they are. So, you know, we use, five actually, we use their thing, they even have subsets. How are we going to do this? How are we going to do that? So, you know, they talk about regional transportation centres. Well, we don't have one. You know, that would be like the Sebus terminal, so North Van has one. Or it would be the bus terminal at Main Street exit on the 99. So we don't, it doesn't apply. So in some cases, the answer is very, very quick, NA. Others, we try and see where we can fit in as members currently of the Metro Vancouver Regional District. There, I don't need to tell you that we're on the cusp of three, two other regional districts, Squamish, Lilawet and Sunshine Coast. Who have very, very different expectations with their regional growth strategy.
So we're not being dictated as to how much growth we have to take?
By no means.
And the 2016 OCP update will look at areas which we could increase density if Lions Bay wanted to.
Precisely. If it's Lions Bay to decide. We are an independent municipality and nobody can tell us what to do.
Okay, can we, so if the community says we don't want any growth, we want it to stay the way it is, which is making population, that's what it will be?
No. What will then happen is that council will take that into consideration, and I think there's a terminology in here that sounds very good, something like, "We'll use that to colour our discussion." But it's council's responsibility to decide what's actually going to happen. And that's why we were voted for by the public. And so I can't make any promises either way, because it's a long, long way away from our future OCP. But it's this level of comment, and I believe there's, how many levels of public consultation in an OCP? Three, I think?
There's a number of...
Yeah. So there's many, many rounds of comment in an OCP. This is what Metro calls a workaround statement, because they need, Lions Bay, as I'm told, whenever I sit down at the metro board meeting, is the lone holdout, and I get roundly jeered by the other, you know, expensive suited mayors. So we are overdue on providing our context statement to them. So this is a workaround, and it's what they're prepared to do. It's a bit of a technical nicety. So to answer the question, am I allowed to answer the question?
Technically, you should be here to listen, but...
Well, listen. We don't have to do any of this.
But if we're aligning with a regional growth strategy which says this area needs to take a million people, every municipality is sitting there doing the same thing as we're saying.
Well, some people want, some people, so North Van, North Van City, for example, their regional context statement encourages the growth of rental accommodation. That's part of their planning.
Shouldn't we take some growth?
I can't speak for council. That's for coun, council wants to hear these things. Now, this is not the opportunity for that. Other than, as I said, this is a statement, a context statement that will last for the next, what, about a year, right? Until the next round of our full OCP comes up. But this sort of commentary is exactly what council needs to hear.
Because I thought we would want to increase our taxes, because our taxes, we really don't get very much. We have one streetway.
Well, I'll tell you that some people like it that way.
You know, Anne Quaid's have a leaking water system, and he presented very well during the conference, we should talk about what the pitfalls of the existing system are. We have to increase tax base to continue to be providing the services that we're going to need.
Agreed. That's the topic of a much wider discussion, which council is obviously well aware of. I think, I won't keep making comments, but people are listening. I think it's fair to say that this council sees itself as the council that was put in place to execute the transition between pioneering Lions Bay and future Lions Bay. And so these kinds of comments are the things that, if they're not near and dear to our hearts already, we take very much to heart when we hear it from residents. We have a widely disparate population that needs, that all have a right to their expectations being heard. You know, as I'm learning in my membership of boards at the metro level, I'm getting political education from big city mayors, and they, for example, will say, "Nobody votes for school tax, because either too young or too old to have kids in school. Very few people do." So that is what politicians do. They make the hard decisions. A political body will put in place a school tax increase. Luckily, we're not going to do that here, because we don't set the school tax rate. But, so that is what, at a high level, that's what, in this case, our little five-member council does, is to make difficult decisions with the best information that we have for the future.
Aren't there some small, quite easy decisions that we can make as a community if we wanted to have a different growth? And to manage that, increase our tax base, which we all want to provide the services by the whole. Can't we start with a few small projects?
Certainly, and that activity will be guided by our OCP. It's currently guided by our OCP.
Which is the 2016...
Well, that's a new one. We have one today, and that's what council works towards.
These comments will be welcomed in the OCP consultation process?
Yeah. I don't know if you heard that. Some of these things are going to be the purview of either council in its regular deliberations or in the context of starting the new OCP. What this meeting is about is specifically to hear public commentary on a very small subset. It's an appendix, not an appendix, an exhibit to...
Schedule.
Schedule to our OCP. It's a legal requirement by the community charter that we provide to our regional district. We happen to belong to the biggest and best regional district in BC, or so they tell us. Yeah, they all do. So, if I have any, if I can call for any further commentary on this specific amendment by law, council would be very pleased to receive that commentary. So I think, with your concurrence, I think we will declare that the period for public comment and input is over. And I believe there's anything left on the gentleman's closing. I don't have to read a statement or... I'd like to say, "Thank you for coming. Very useful. I've got a page of notes. Most of this stuff is not unexpected, but I'm interested to hear what the things are that concern people." So, look for the next and final reading of this bylaw to take place.
Third has to happen first.
Yeah, I mean, the third read. Oh, and then, so I never remember. I never remember how, so there's one more opportunity for change in the third reading, which will take place probably next council meeting or next one after?
Actually, change doesn't occur after third.
After, so, yeah, but, so we're still going for third?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. And then we do a final adoption, and then off it goes to metro. And then they can get off my back for another year. Thanks for coming.